Order. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Ms. Dozier, do we have a call, please?
Mayor Moss, Councilman Contreras is present, Councilman Gillian present, Councilman Rehnenbaum present, Mayor Protim Lee Young present, and Councilman Kremel present.
Thank you. Would you all please stand? Join with me in a moment of silence, and then we'll do the pledge. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the City Council minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council minutes for November fourteenth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve a service agreement with Silverback Shredding Services. Is that you, Mr. Grimes?
That would be City Secretary.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Dozier. Mayor, Council, after reviewing our contract with Shredded and speaking to Pat, we thought it was in the best interest for the city to cancel that contract with Shredded. It was costing the city quite a bit of money for the service that we were providing, that they were providing, and we were having an issue with the billing. So after sending them a letter that we were canceling the services, I had already gone through and was looking at different companies. Silverback Shredding has been vetted by other surrounding cities, and I liked that it's only a twelve-month contract, and it's a flat rate of fifty-five dollars per site per pickup. And there's no other added cost like fuel cost and delivery cost and all the other costs that Shredded was billing us for. So I'd like for Council to approve this contract for the twelve months at a fifty-five-dollar flat rate per location, which would be City Hall and the Police Department on a every-four-week basis.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Crystal, or do we have a motion, please?
I think a motion to approve the agreement with Silverback Services for the next twelve months.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thought you had a question.
No.
Next item, to consider a community facilities development agreement with HMH Country Hollow Land LLC, or assigns for the development of Country Hollow Residential Subdivision, one-hundred-and-two lots being nineteen-point-one-six-seven acres, John H. Phelps Survey Track Abstract Number ten forty-six in the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. HMH Country Hollow Land LLC is the developer for Country Hollow, the residential subdivision as stated. Subdivision will be serviced by Willow Park's public water and sewer and contains public infrastructure and improvements, which will be maintained by the city of Willow Park. This agreement provides terms for construction of public improvements and utility services, as well as other requirements. It must be approved and executed by both parties before construction of the property is permitted. With Council's approval on this item, as requested, that also grant the city administrator's authority to make administrative changes to the agreement if necessary. City staff recommends approval of the community facilities developers agreement for terms regarding public improvements as stated.
Okay. Any questions for Tony? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion for the approval of the community's facilities developers agreement with HMH Country Hollow Land LLC, or assigns for the Country Hollow subdivision as presented, and the authority of the city administrator to make administrative changes if necessary.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion, please? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, to approve an amendment to the UNCO three-eighty agreement. Ms. Tony?
Mayor and Council, I apologize, the brief was missing from the packet, but I'll let you know what we're going on here. December two thousand and twenty-one, the Chapter three-eighty Economic Development Agreement, buy-in between the city of Willow Park and Unco Re Holdings LLC, was approved by City Council and executed by Mayor Doyle Moss and Samir Patel and Elias Pope, managing partners for Unco Re Holdings LLC. Due to the unforeseen changes in economic climate, Unco Re Holdings LLC sold the property to its assignee, BPO Real Estate LLC, and production of the standard-service restaurant has been delayed. Unco-owned BPO are requesting a sixteen-month extension of the developers' obligation terms of the original three-eighty Economic Development Agreement as presented in the amendment and assignment Chapter three-eighty Economic Development Agreement attached. City staff recommends approval of the amendment, excuse me, and assignment Chapter three-eighty Economic Development Agreement, and amendment of the three-eighty Economic Development Agreement buy-in between the city of Willow Park and Unco Re Holdings.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Tony?
So this is basically a sixteen-month extension?
That's correct.
And no other changes to the?
That's correct.
Agreement.
And Pat has reviewed it.
And they're, they're okay with not extending. This Chapter three-eighty, Council, we offered them a reward tax rebate for a period through two thousand and twenty-six, I believe. And of course, they didn't ask for extension of the term of that, so it will probably expire before they get any rebates. So I'm surprised they didn't ask for that extension.
I sent them this beforehand, and they did say that they approved it as it stood. So if they realize that or decide they want to change that, that may come back for another amendment. But as of now, they have been told about this beforehand and said they're fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the Unco three-eighty agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Ms. Tony? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, to approve on a resolution opting out of the class-action lawsuit against Three M, DuPont, and other PFAS manufacturers arising out of PFAS chemicals.
So I'll just kind of put a brief out there. We got the resolution in the packet, but essentially what's happening is PFAs and PFOs, and I think Leah probably could tell you more about those than I can. They're listed as EPA, by the EPA, as forever contaminants, meaning they'll never go away. Currently, there are twenty-nine chemicals on the list that the EPA is testing for, and that list could continue to grow as the EPA designates. These chemical compounds are byproducts of everyday use in items including plastics, paints, gas, and oil. Willow Park has not gone through any official EPA testing, but we're scheduled to have some in two thousand and twenty-four. We've had some unofficial testing performed by the state, and there are currently no signs of the chemicals in the groundwater. Fort Worth has been through the official testing, and some surface water resources were positive for some of the chemicals. And obviously, we get our, our surface water or our treated water from Fort Worth. But the extent of the contamination is not known until the EPA sets the maximum containment level. In other words, the EPA hasn't set the level that you need to eradicate to. This is not expected to happen until the end of two thousand and twenty-four or early two thousand and twenty-five. There's currently a class-action lawsuit against both Three M and DuPont, and both companies have made settlement offers. Fort Worth is choosing to opt out of the settlements and has asked those who purchase treated water from them to do so. Fort Worth has decided this because the settlement prevents utilities from requesting or pursuing additional compensation. In other words, if you, if you opt in, you're going to have a release of liability, and so whatever you get, you're going to get. Fort Worth's concern is that the cost of treatment to remove these forever chemicals will greatly outweigh the settlement received, and the utilities will be forever responsible for the cost. Willow Park is in a unique situation. While we purchase water from Fort Worth, we also continue to produce and treat our own water. Currently, the chemicals of concern are not showing up in our groundwater, but this could change in the future. If we opt out into the settlement, the chances of the city receiving any part of the settlement is very slim, and would most likely go to Fort Worth since we purchase our water from them. By opting out, the city would have an opportunity to pursue additional compensation in the future, as well as receive money for our own expenses. Staff would recommend that Council opt out, and we have a resolution that got into the packet.
Two resolutions, different ones. The first one is one, we would recommend that opt, both us and Fort Worth out of this lawsuit. The other resolution would just opt out the city of Willow Park with regard to the water received from the park. We don't recommend it pass that, but for Fort Worth. So the first one in your packet that we recommend is.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
Page thirty-four, the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution of the city of Willow Park, Texas, authorizing the city attorney or designee to opt the city out of the Three M and DuPont class-action settlements for drinking water contamination, authorizing a related memorandum of understanding to the city's wholesale water provider.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
We have another resolution on this same agenda.
I thought that's the only one.
No, we had two choices.
Okay, yeah, yeah, opt in. Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Next item, to authorize use of hotel occupancy tax funds for billboard advertising. Mr. Grimes, or Tony?
Yep.
Or whoever.
Mayor and Council, Mayor Protim Lee Young requested that the staff suggest ways in which hot tax, hotel tax, could be used for the city. And staff contacted Lamar Billboards to inquire about the renewal of the billboard sign situated on the southeast corner of City Hall property. And we found that the rate for rental of that was thirty-one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars per side. That rate is for one year, billed in thirteen-four-week intervals, and it includes the initial cost of four hundred and eighty dollars to do the artwork for it. Every time we would change that artwork, it would be an additional four hundred and eighty dollars for them to change it. And they would either design it, or we can design it and send it to them. Staff was approached with the proposal of replacing the standard sign with one that is digital. This change would require a twenty-five-year lease for the sign and sign permit to allow the conversion, but it would come with some perks for the city, which is discounted advertising costs, negotiable advertising revenue, branding of the pole, is what they had said, which lends itself to an opportunity for an impressive monument sign for the city without a digital display cost, which was an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars up to for that size for the city. So that would include the digital sign. It wouldn't be just for us, obviously, so it would be for other advertisers to be on it, but us getting a portion of that if we should decide to do that, and we can negotiate that. I've got some photos of some other cities that have done this, and I'm going to just pass those around to you. And then Lamar said they will also do a presentation to Council if they're desired and instructed by, to staff to do that, so I can arrange that if you are interested in that. Pat has a memo that he sent around that's at your seat, and I'm going to take it over, turn it over to him.
Council, the memo that the guy basically explains the use of hot funds, hotel occupancy taxes. The test to use HOT funds are a two-step process. You have to first of all show that every expenditure will directly promote tourism and the hotel motel industry, which means you've got to put heads in beds for each expenditure. It also has to meet the second part of the test, which it has to fit in one of the nine categories. Advertising expenses is one of the nine categories. However, it needs to be focused on tourism and the promotion of the hotel and convention industry, which means beds and beds. So, for example, if you're going to advertise, you could say, "Come stay in, in Willow Park, in our hotels." That would be a perfect expenditure. Also, if you're advertising festivals, arts events, different things within these categories that would, in each council, each time we spend these monies, the council will authorize it. So we'll make the findings that this is going to fit the categories and make sure it follows this law for use of all of them. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So how much is in our account for that right now, and how much did we bring in the last year?
So, those are two questions.
Yeah.
The first one is, we have four hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and six cents.
Uh-huh.
As of five PM today.
Okay.
Last year, we brought in a quarter of a million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand nine twenty.
Okay.
Our, our monthly income revenue generation from both hotels is roughly, over the last twelve months, is twenty-one thousand dollars, twenty-one one sixty. In the six-plus years that we could go back and look at our financial records, we have had zero expenditures out of this fund.
So this, these digital signs, so what would that option be? They would build one specific for the city?
Mm-hmm. So we can have a surround that's built around it like those are. Now, I did ask him, the gentleman with whom I've been speaking is on vacation, and so I wasn't able to contact him again to find out how exactly those costs are allocated. If we allow for it to be digital, what does that mean as far as giving us branding of the pole, is what he told me. So I would assume the one, the Waxahachie one that you're looking at, that's just kind of a stone with their name down it, I would assume that's probably what they're including in that. So obviously, the more elaborate designs are probably to the expense of the city, I would surely imagine. But I haven't gotten confirmation of that yet, because I haven't talked to him again yet.
Okay, and it, and what was the rough order cost of that?
Pardon me?
The rough order cost for the digital sign?
I haven't gotten that far with him. I didn't know whether that was even something that we should consider. So if you, if Council considers it, then I'll look further into it and get more information on it. So.
This is a twelve-month contract?
Yes.
It would be, for the digital sign, that would be something that's ours. For what we're talking about is thirty-one thousand and change, is thirty-one thousand per year per side. That's not the whole sign.
Sixty-two for both sides of the billboard.
Plus any changes.
Correct.
Unless we're going to leave the same message up for twelve months.
But I mean, we're agreeing to do it for twelve months.
Yes, that's the least expensive way to do it, so.
Yeah.
You have to keep the same final message up for?
No, you can, every time you change it, they'll charge a four hundred and eighty-dollar redesign. So we can send them design, or they'll design it for us and just tell them what we want. And then that includes them reproducing the sign and actually installing it.
How soon does it take effect?
Depends on the availability. Now, when I was doing this last month, they actually had this, this lease was up, I want to say it was the eleventh. And so I think, I see another ad up there now, so they probably, I don't know how far they've gone, so we have to catch when that one ends. And then the current leaser has, like, the first right of refusal to renew. If they don't, then we can tell them that we want to swoop in. If we do a backup contract, then it costs more for us, so I wouldn't recommend doing that, just waiting until that one expires, and that person just keep requiring as to when that one expires. Call them, and then.
So if somebody renews that contract, we may not have a sign.
It, it will just keep going. It'll just keep rolling. Now, if that person that has it, and they say, "Oh, well, like, Tex had it, Tex dot had it last time," I don't see who it was this time. But if they do a twelve-year contract, or then we, I mean, a twelve-month contract, then we won't be able to renew it until potentially next year. But if that contract expires and they decide they want to renew, they have first right of refusal to renew it. So we have to wait until that expires before we can jump in.
So this, go ahead.
Well, I guess the question I have, based on what you said, Pat, is that any message we put up there has to promote overnight stays.
If you're using hot funds.
If we, if we use the sixty-two thousand of hot funds this twelve months, let's just say the message, if we use hot funds, must put heads in bed.
Well, or events, or anything.
But an event that's an overnight stay. Like Willow Park, for example, one of our events does not necessarily meet a hotel stay standard.
Unless you've got nine dogs.
Well, you know, and that's some of the things that when you talk about putting heads in beds, there's, you know, say if you market it for a multi-day event, is it a one-day event?
Yes.
Yes, one afternoon.
Those are hard, always hard for us to show, but it doesn't mean necessarily that you can't, couldn't meet the standard. So, I mean, it's, it's usually what, what the hotel industry, of course, remember, that's who really this tax is set up for, is the benefit. You're, to perpetuate the tax, you're supposed to try to get the most bang for your buck. But that's not required by law. So if you have one head in bed that you can show is tied to event, technically it meets the expenditure, as long as it fits the standard. So, I mean, I think you have a lot of leeway. I just think you don't want to abuse it and end up, you know, end up where you, where you get caught, you're hanging on.
So this is only up if, if one of those become available, we're in. If it doesn't become available for three months, six months, we're waiting.
Right.
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Tony?
So I'd like to find out what, you know, long-term, if we could start getting some cost estimates and what something like this might be, because I could see this being used for, you know, golf tournaments or anything else that they have going on, football games, it doesn't matter. You know, they're all applicable, I would think, so we could just keep it rotating and current.
Well, and once it's up, you're, you're committing to advertising for other people. So we're not, you know, we may have a small fraction on there that we're actually advertising something on there as a pocket. We wouldn't have it all the time.
Uh-huh.
So it would be opening up to, you know, whoever wanted to, to lease it. I mean, they would put their advertising space on there, so you may have something for, you know, whatever, fireworks show or whatever.
Right.
You've got other things on there they're advertising, they're paying for space for it. We would get a percentage of their advertising for revenue for us for allowing, you know, for it being on our property. And then if we want to advertise on it, we get it at a discounted rate also, which, of course, we'd use the hot tax for some event that's happening that we would need to advertise for. So the actual structure itself, I just have to figure out who pays for what when it comes down to what they're actually throwing into that or what, what the extra is and how much that would cost, so.
Yeah, I think for long-term, we, that's something we might want to look at, I think, so.
Okay.
What are, of course, what are the guidelines if somebody else leases that? Are there guidelines of what they can put up there? Political? I mean, is there any, anything?
I honestly don't know. I'll find out for you.
Yeah, definitely.
That's one of my concerns as well. So, "Welcome to Willow Park," and then somebody has.
Right.
Something completely one-sided or something that's not politically.
Like, "Go to Houston Astros."
Right.
I don't know, I don't know how, yeah. And I'm sure that Lamar has some kind of a stipulation of, of what they actually allow to put on their billboards, so I'll find out what their guidelines are.
Okay.
So I'm sure it would be, you know, something that would be tasteful, but perhaps not for us.
But if we have the contract, we control what goes up there.
I don't know the answer to that.
We're just leasing the space.
Yeah.
The only way you control is if you lease both sides of it for twelve months, so you control what goes up there. That's where you have total control.
Sixty-two thousand a year plus four hundred every time we change the picture.
Yes.
You'd probably change it, you would not change it every month. You'd probably change it every quarter.
Yeah.
Do we have enough promotional items to do a full year's worth? I mean, I get that there's, like, football season, that's great, but that's three and a half months.
You could do Squaw Creek, we'll eventually start having golf tournaments, you could use it to promote golf tournaments there. I know that the Chamber has events, they've asked for us to promote stuff through the hot tax for them.
Well, I think that's what I'd be interested in seeing, is if we're going, I think the only way to justify the expense is to use the hot tax. I think that in general, the sixty-two thousand for twelve months of advertising shouldn't come from another part of our budget. So I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but that would be, I like the idea. But I would want some ideas of how we're justifying that. And I only know of one tournament at Squaw Creek that's a junior tournament that I'm sure there, that, that a lot of those kids that come in from, you know, for a two-day tournament, they are definitely using the hotel. So we have one that I know of, but the idea of how does that work, what would we be advertising if we were looking for three to four versions during the year? How do we justify using hot tax for that? So that, all those ideas, as we collect that information, I think, would, would be in line with more what I think we should do.
And does the event have to be inside the city of Willow Park, or could it be a regional event that we are supporting?
The standard would be, and I think Pat's about to correct me, but the standard would be, would, is there a reasonable expectation that they would stay at one of the two hotels of Willow Park?
The Willow Park.
Benefit Willow Park. So, yeah, the answer is no, it doesn't have to be an inside event, city-level event.
So Parker County Rodeo?
Yeah.
Because the, absolutely, people would potentially be staying in our hotels and going to.
I had a city do the fishing tournament, it was fifty miles away, because it was a regional fishing, large tournament.
No, the Fort Worth rodeo draws people out here.
Yes.
Hotels. We do have the nicest hotels in the county, the cleanest.
Yes.
Stock show's coming up.
And the thing is, and I think this is a, whether we take action on, on the billboard is, is obviously something we need to decide, but we're probably going to see another hotel, and if, maybe even two more hotels. We've been approached by at least one company, and they seem to come in droves. And so it would not, in other words, this fund is going to just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And it's going to be something that eventually we're going to need to set some policies for how we're going to allocate. I think that's what Leah's kind of saying. And, I mean, it's either that or I don't know what we're going to do.
Well, what I, what I would like to do is, and I talked to the council about it and just mentioned to me, is set up a kind of a program so we can utilize hot funds for third-party ventures, nonprofits, whoever. So if someone wants to put on a Christmas show in Willow Park, and they want to use hot funds, they give us an application, y'all would authorize that funding. They usually then have to do a post-event report showing the benefit, the impact of the hotel motel industry and the city of Willow Park. So that way, you can take the use, you're good use of those funds. And so I think having a program like that in place, we've got a lot of money, we'll continue to grow, and we need to make sure we're ready. To use, it doesn't do us any good. need to make sure we're ready to use, doesn't do us any good sitting in a bank.
I'd like.
Is there a time period we have to use these funds up by, or?
No.
I'd like for us to consider doing this for the 12 months, and take a chance, not to take a chance, take the opportunity, if something comes up, to try it. Because we've got to get in line to, to do it. So I wish the council would start, I'd like to start doing it and seeing where we go. And if we're not any bound for any longer than 12 months, I don't think we have anything to lose.
I know the westbound expires in February, so.
That'd be a good one.
Mm-hmm. So the eastbound, like I said, it, it just renewed by someone because there's a new ad up there. So now whether it was a 30-day ad or whether it was a three-month ad, I don't know. But I'll find out.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial, is to know what dates we're looking at, what message we think we'd want to put up first, you know, how we, how we think we are going to use the hot tax for that. I'd also like, since the question is open, like, the idea of a discussion of, can it be used for capital expense if we think that putting in our trail system, putting in a bathroom and signage and some of the things that, that could generate potential of a festival, which we could use it, if, what level of plans do we need to get to to be able to say we could use it for capital expenses for that trail system that we already know we're going to incur this year? So some of those ideas, I'd like to throw around and see. That, that's kind of one of the things we're hoping to do, is get tourism with good trail system. So I think that'd be a great thing if we can get our attorneys to say, yes, that works.
So, so this is going to be a pretty significant fund in the next few years, it keeps growing substantially.
You're, it's going $21,000 a month.
So what I, maybe we ought to consider putting a, like a, like you have with the parks, you know, a group together to kind of man, offer options, studies, you know, what, what things we should be able to use it on, bring it to council, and get approval.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
A lot of cities have hot boards?
Yep.
That ultimately make recommendations to council on expenditures.
Uh-huh. So that's going to come before the council anyway.
It'd be the equivalent of a P and Z.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think some input, you know, get more ideas on those kind of things, I think that'd be great.
Okay, what's the council's pleasure?
I was going to ask about, you know, additional signage. Like, it doesn't necessarily have to be limited to right out front. Like, if we have other options that could come out, or we could, there's other places, I realize this gives us the most branding, but if we're looking to catch the eyes as people are first entering Willow Park, coming from the west to the east, we have, we talked about, you know, purchasing our own signage that we could do. There's so many different aspects of this, not beyond just the one that has a, maybe a February designation and beyond. So even if
I mean, there's.
The direct option right in front of us isn't, doesn't come up in time, we still have, I'm assuming, every other billboard in Willow Park that we could look into as well and look for, you know, things that we could display that may fit better if we found something closer to the trail system that, say, exit here for, you know, mountain biking and hiking activities, or, you know, two-down stop for our barbecue festival, or wherever it may be, based on the, the signage. Doesn't necessarily have to be right out in front of us. We have other.
That's the prime location.
Does, does it have to be in Willow Park? That's the other question.
The billboard?
Yeah.
It, that wouldn't necessarily have to be in Willow Park. You could put, you could buy one in Hudson Oaks or Weatherford or whatever.
A lot of cities are using these signage directing tourists to sites and attractions, monument signs throughout the cities. Those are high, those are real high demand. You could, you know, walking trail, trail system and have, you know, signage pointing to them. Those things are very helpful to tourists to utilize.
You could put the parking lot as a trailhead.
Well, I guess where we are is, we have two options. We could approve it, or we can wait for some answers to the questions about cost that we've discussed with Tony.
Are you talking about the cost for a digital sign?
Yeah, I'd like to see what, you know, a plan for a digital sign that we could, you know, make on-the-fly changes if we needed to for.
I think that's a lot of money.
Well, and that doesn't prevent us from doing that for 12 months, because it's going to take six months to build a digital sign.
That's correct.
So.
And then what about a board?
Forming a.
Forming a board, a recommendation board or something?
We can come back to you either at the December meeting or January meeting with a recommendation for that, for the hot.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Okay, I think, do I would like to hear a motion to approve the funds for, is that what you're, like, we can go ahead and make a motion to approve, let's say, one side, one side of the sign for hot tax?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve $31,000 for one side at the next renewal.
The west side, western side?
The next available renewal.
And that's if it becomes available.
That's if, yeah.
Now, would we go 12 months from that point forward, or are we looking at it from right now?
It'd be from, it would be from February of '24 to February of '25.
Provided we get to February.
Provide, yes, yes.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I'd say as long as, as long as we get the, the updates like you're talking about before the actual, you know, whether it's the December or January, having the stuff in front of us for us to view before approval in, of February and beyond.
I think we'll have plenty of time to.
That's what I was going to say, is just direct staff to report back with the information of what would go on the sign.
And, and that's going to be approved by the council anyway.
Right.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
City council comments. Silence is golden.
Well, so, and sometimes I wait for Brian to say whatever he's going to say.
Leah hasn't said, see manager comments yet.
Well, I know, so that's why I'm, so obviously, we'll have the hot tax at some point in the future. We did have, I think staff is going to potentially report at the next council on the Sam Bass Road drainage that was discussed last time, so.
Yep.
Just confirming that that is on the agenda for the next council meeting.
We had that discussion this afternoon.
Okay, perfect. And that's it for me.
Christmas party, December the 7th, a week from Thursday, is that correct?
That is, Thursday. No, Thursday.
Week from Thursday, at the hotel. Lot of good things going on in the city. We were in a meeting today, and a lot of good stuff going on. So appreciate the council. I mentioned the council today in our meeting. We have a very good council, and so thank you all for what you do. Mr. Grimes?
I'll be brief. The Christmas tree lighting is scheduled for, for Thursday at 6:00, is that correct, Rose?
Yes.
6 o'clock. However, there is impending weather that's supposed to happen. And we will make a go-no-go call sometime tomorrow or Thursday morning at the latest. It's supposed to rain all day, and it'll be a mud pit, and I don't think anybody wants to plug in Christmas lights while standing in a puddle of water while it's lighting. Nate, Nate may do that, I don't know. But, so we may be moving that to next Tuesday. So there's your FYI.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?